Welcome to our town council meeting. We'll call it the order and rise up for the previous.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under by individual liberty and best of all.
Angela Atkinson. Here.
Here.
Angela Sanessa.
Here.
Angela Rocco.
Here.
Angela Beach. There you have it for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Marks. He's a town, right? He said something. Why, he's the citizens, are there any citizens here that wish to speak to the council about our agenda or anything that's on their mind? I see none raising their hands. Or anything else. And I see, I see none online either, correct? Okay.
Mayor, we're gonna add an item to consent, please.
To the consent agenda, okay. So, what mayor's update, I don't have anything to update. So, yes, so we'll take a motion to add.
I would like to add a item to the consent agenda for the Timberland Golf Course Men's Club donation.
Okay, thank you, second?
Second.
Favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so moved, so we'll add that, we'll make that number four, I guess. That's a consent. Okay, so, meeting, all right, so we're at our consent agenda, look at that. We have the four items, waiving rental fee for Burling's Upbeat, twenty twenty-four, paying breakfast, and $2,000 approved waiving the lease fees. Appropriate the funds for the computer equipment account, special grants and donations fund, and number four. The Timberland Golf Course Men's Club donated a thousand, thirteen hundred dollars towards the repair of the Easy Go car. And just the gooseinator, we're gonna accept the Timberland Golf Course Men's Club donation of twenty-five hundred dollars towards the trade of the nineteen ninety-eight. Part for twenty eighteen club car, carryall car, wow, that sounds pretty fancy. What do we have going? Just trying to stop. We can't. No, it's okay, Dad.
If you can hear me, you have to mute yourself. There you go. There you go. Two.
With Zoom?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so we have our consent agenda, we'll take a motion.
I move we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, second on that?
Second.
Thank you, any other comments or questions, hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right, so moved, on to our new business.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, welcome. So, the first item on the agenda is recreational trails grant, had a discussion the last meeting, and Mr. Mahoney worked on some of your recommendations. And I'll have Jim just be a quick overview of the changes and opportunity for you to ask questions or certification. Jim, over to you.
Thank you. So, last meeting, we had some feedback on concerns of some of the property owners in the neighborhood about specifically the improvements to the two parking spaces that are on the Stan Tech Road right away next to one of the houses on Sprucebrook, and also to the idea of putting in a pedestrian pathway along Sprucebrook Road. So, basically, we've dropped those, both of those items from the scope. We will try to do some pavement markings for safety when we repave Sprucebrook Road, which is planned to be done this year, I believe. And, but other than that, the scope is the same, this would be cooperative application with Middletown, Middletown will take the lead. Our portion, it's about twenty-five thousand, we have a twenty percent match, so our match would be fifty thousand coming from payment and move open space.
Okay, thanks, Jim, so, all those things we talked about. I just have one question on that, where we decided not to pave that by the gentleman's house there off of Sprucebrook, right? The small parking lot?
Yes.
We, I mean, I've gone by there a few times since and seen, you know, I don't know, maybe three or four cars parked there sometimes, seems like a little bit of an intrusion into that man's property, but what, what do, you know, I don't, I don't know, what do we do to control that? Is there anything we can do to control that? I know we're not gonna pave it now, but what, what do we, I mean, I know that's town property there, but still, it's.
If I may, Mayor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just, and thank you for taking the time to rework some of this, I spoke with him this morning. I know we're not gonna be paving that area, but I think it's so close to the existing parking, the gentleman's driveway, if you will, I mean, it's basically butted up next to each other, it's right there. And there were several cars that were there parked at one time, perhaps we can put some sort of a sign up, you know, two cars only, you know, or you get towed or something like that. I mean, they're piling them back to back and two and three wide, every bit of, you know, three wide. And that's was brought to my attention after we spoke earlier today, so.
And we, when we went there, even we pulled in with three cars, and it was.
It's dangerous.
It's dangerous, it's very intrusive on his property, I don't, I don't know.
So, maybe we can do something there, I don't know, you know, if the fence is an issue, you know, we're not gonna pave it, which I'm thrilled about, and I'm sure that Cody will be thrilled about that as well. But we probably need to do some posting, something.
Maybe posting?
I checked with the PD on this one, can put some sign, this is no parking.
I wonder if we should just do that?
I think it might not be a bad idea, and I know that it may not sit with you real well, but, I mean, it is right there, and the weather hasn't even started to be nice, you know, I just foresee having some real big issues over there.
It's also, it's very dangerous to pull out there.
When you come up over the hill there, and there's nowhere to cater, so you're backing into the street, there's no other way around it, it is, it's dangerous.
Could restrict it with a couple boulders or.
Oh, you could do that.
Yeah.
You know, somehow more natural looking than.
Yeah.
Sign in the guy's front lawn.
You could do that too, maybe, put some nice, you know, maybe they can move some boulders out of the woods there, there's probably some boulders.
Yeah, that can be, you know, and no park, I mean, it's not worth the aggravation or the safety issue for two cars to park there, in my opinion.
It just, it's, I don't know, it's just, yeah, it's not, I don't think it's very fair to him.
Have there been crashes there, or? I don't know about crashings, I mean, I'd have to have the PD do some sort of a report for us, but it is, you know, and as the weather gets nicer, and, you know, people are out, and, and they encroach, people don't behave themselves. There's, literally, there is no space there at all to park two cars, and you've got three and a half or three wide, and one off to the side just behind the third vehicle, I'm, you know. Does he have any issues with people actually parking on his property, or no? I don't know, I would have to ask him, but I'm sure, you know, they, I'm sure they've K-turned on his driveway, you know.
You really can't.
It's a bad spot.
You can't get out of there without kind of touching his property.
Really not accessible.
You have to kind of back up onto his driveway to get out of there.
We had to.
Yeah, we had.
We had to, to back up, and we were only, what, we were three cars.
Three cars.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a very safe spot either, it really isn't, because they're coming down the hill on Sprucebrook, it's kind of.
There's an entry there to get to the trail?
To the trail, but, but they can walk up from Pistol Creek.
They can walk down from Pistol Creek, I mean, there's plenty of parking.
Which is.
If they want to walk, let them walk, I mean, you know.
Yeah, take a, take a little bit longer walk, but that's what we're talking about, right, on the, on Sprucebrook, when they pave it, we're gonna make it a little.
The bridge is gonna be wider.
The bridge will be wider, we'll make a little lane, they could walk down from Sprucebrook, from Pistol Creek.
Pistol Creek. A safe way for people to walk.
Yes.
Because it's not safe now, it really is.
What effect the grant, we restrict it?
No, we could, I think we can do anything we want, I mean.
What do you think, Jim?
This is our proposal.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, again, we're not proposing any improvements as part of the grant, so I think this is kind of a side conversation, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you can make your own decisions, you know, just to note that the driveway for that property encroaches on the town property, so the driveway is really our property.
His driveway?
Don't figure that.
How does, how does he get into his house without the driveway?
I mean, he just bought that house a couple years ago, how does that happen?
They can't all be town property up to the.
There's been an easement that's attached.
Isn't, wasn't, isn't his garage is in the back?
His garage is underneath the house to the right of the entranceway.
So, he would have no driveway to his house if he didn't go over town property, that doesn't seem right. What do we buy? Well, I know, I'm sure it does, but I mean, you know, perhaps we should.
It could be grandfather clause, I mean, I don't know.
I think we should move forward with the grant.
Absolutely, absolutely, I think, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And all the other adjustments that you made, we're very happy with those, and we appreciate you doing that, and I just like to make one more comment, because last night while we were here for the budget, and we were, and we talked about this briefly today. The monies that we've put up for these grants, okay, do not get spent unless these projects are approved, and I think there was a little misunderstanding maybe last night, remember Mark?
Yep.
So, if we have to come up with fifty thousand dollars, if the project has not awarded us and we don't get the grant, we're not losing the fifty thousand dollars that we have to come up with.
Right.
So, I just want to be clear on that, okay?
One, one other thing I would just mention about the trailhead is that, you know, we could relocate the trailhead over to Lamentation Drive, and people could park on the street there. You know, because there's the gate there, where Stan Tech comes out there as well, so we can, if that's something you're interested in, I could talk to.
We can talk about that, let's, let's talk about it and take a look at it.
Those, maintains all the Blue Blaze Trails in the state, so if that's something we're interested in, I can, I certainly talk to them about that.
Oh, that might be good.
We can move forward, we can, you know, we can talk about that, okay.
That's good, yeah, thanks, Jim, that's good.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, sorry.
No, 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 that's good.
About that, but we waited, let's do it right.
Yeah, so what else we got, so we, we're pretty much got everything we.
Everything that we had asked.
We were asked for, we appreciate you doing that.
Large parking lot, the elimination of that, you know, pathway in front of that farmhouse.
And, and we, we could do something with the ATV issue problem there too.
We talked about.
We can talk about that after though.
Separate, that's, you know, this way we move forward with the, the grant, to get that in.
Yeah, okay, good.
Been done on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We good, folks, anyone else? We good? Okay, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to authorize the town manager to participate in a grant application to be submitted by the town of Middletown for Lamentation Mountain slash Pistol Creek area for a recreational trails grant that will include improvements in Burling, an estimated cost of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And if the town contribute fifty thousand in cash, we act for the Burling portion of the project, from the fee in lieu of open space account.
Thank you, second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much, any other comments or questions, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, all right, motion carries.
Great, thank you.
Jim.
Thank you, Jim, I know you worked hard on that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Jim. Agenda item number two is the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we received help of the legislative contingent from the state for the police station renovation. It will be administered by the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection. And this is to, we receive the paperwork, certain ready to submit, and then for you to formally approve, appropriate the funds for the police station renovation.
Yes, thank you, so we're all up to speed on this, right, this was going, we get a nice grant that we got from the state, and thank you, Donna, and our state reps for working on this. So, this is great, this will go towards the cost of our renovation, so if there's no other questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to appropriate the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar state urban grant through the police station renovation grant account in the police station construction fund, pending approval by the board of planning.
Thank you, second on that?
I'll second that.
Thank you, any other comments or questions, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved.
Great, thank you. Agenda item number three is a proposal from Mr. Simons, who has gone out and got some pricing for our diesel, saving us about seventy cents a gallon for a total of twenty-two thousand seven fifty, the lowest bidder. Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
You're here tonight for some more punishment, didn't you have enough last night? I promise you, we won't be here as late as we were last night. We'll be earlier tonight.
Do you have any questions, obviously Jim is here.
Yeah, no, I don't think so.
That's great.
Good, it sounds good, so, yeah, with that, we'll go and take a motion.
Move to award the twenty twenty-four slash twenty-five diesel contract to Tunxus or of Meriden, Connecticut utilizing Capital Regional Council Government Bid Number seven hundred and sixty.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
Any other comments or questions, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right, so moved.
Thank you. Agenda item number four is for us to apply for a grant for the senior center bus. And Tina Doyle has been working on this, as you probably remember, a couple of years ago, we applied for a grant and received the full amount, the help of some town match, and we have thirty thousand dollars in the ADA improvements account that we want to use. And then it'll be going through Tasker Ford, and manufacturer prices about approximately hundred and twenty-five thousand, so the remainder will be coming from DOT grant.
Wow, that's great.
Nice job, Tina.
Cool crowd.
Yeah, excellent. Okay, any questions on this? All right, we'll go ahead and I guess we got a couple motions there, try.
Move to approve a transfer of thirty thousand dollars from the ADA improvements account, seniors center advantage account, both in the CNR fund pending approval by the board of planning.
Second on that?
I'll second that.
All right, any other comments or questions, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, right, so moved, or two?
Move to authorize the senior center director to apply for the Connecticut DOT Section five-three-one-zero, fiscal year twenty-three Enhanced Mobility of Seniors and Individuals with Disabilities Assistant Grant, and if awarded, to deposit the funds into the senior center account.
Thank you, second on that?
Second that.
There's no other comments, we'll go and vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, very motion carries.
Great, thank you, agenda item number five, this is a recommendation from Parks and Recreation Commission, we posted Nutmeg Games with Middletown, and historically, we have waived a hundred percent of the fees associated with it, and Parks and Rec is recommending this time, we waive only fifty percent of the fee. Towns, you have a schedule, we have been waiving a lot of fees lately, so.
Yes.
I think this is the right thing to do, hence it's not consent, so this waiver, we are there asking approval for that.
Yeah, that seems fair, right, and it's only fifty percent, so, we've had these folks in town for a while, right, a long time, so that's, that's good, any.
Do what it costs our grounds or our people to deal with.
I don't.
I'm there.
Oh, there's, Jen, yes.
They are only asking to waive the field fees, every year, they pay the grounds workers that come and groom the fields for their baseball games, and the grounds workers that do the trash, and open the gates at Schles and handle everything else there, so they do always pay full price for our grounds overtime workers. Right.
Great, thank you. Excellent, any other questions, hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to approve waiving fifty percent of the estimated field usage fees, not to exceed the amount of one thousand eight hundred and forty dollars for the twenty twenty-four Nutmeg State Games, withheld at Schles Field and Beretta Field from July nineteenth through October fourth, twenty twenty-four.
You second on that?
I'll second that.
Any other comments or questions, hearing none, we'll vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so moved.
Great, thank you. Agenda item number six is early order chemical program for Timberland Golf, Sal, I'll see you there. So, this is a, something that we do every year, if you order early enough, they give a significant rebate, and they're from the manufacturer. Sal, you want to add anything about the program, please?
Sure, thank you, Rose, how you doing, council? Like Carosa said, it's a yearly program offered in March by Harrows and Heritage, we order it now, but pay for it in July with the FY twenty-five budget. But we try to take advantage of it now, because we get good incentives and good discounts on, on brand name products. You know, we like to use brand name products, because you get a good guarantee on them, you know what you're getting, but also, you have the experience of, of, of using those products and knowing how it works at Timberland. So, with that, and the knowledge of their reps, who we're very fond of, we'd like to, you know, get authorization to purchase the chemicals through them with the early, early order program.
Okay, thanks, all, appreciate that. Yeah, we've done this before, so.
Every year.
We do it all the time, right? Okay, any questions, folks? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to waive the bidding procedure and purchase chemicals from Harrows and Heritage Landscape Supply Group, in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty cents. This is in the best interest of the town of Burling, the chemical purchases are through the early order program of BASF, Injenta, Bayer, C Pro, or Vertva, chemical companies.
Thank you, second?
I'll second that.
Hearing no other questions, comments, we'll go ahead and vote on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sal. Agenda item number seven, the final agenda item for the day, is to set a public hearing to discuss the ordinance to fund the actually determined employer contribution. The February sixth ordinance committee meeting, the ordinance committee recommended to the town council to move forward with this ordinance, but before we do that, we got to schedule a public hearing. We would like to schedule it at the next council meeting, which is March nineteenth at seven PM.
Okay, yeah, we talked about this already, so, there's no other comments or questions, we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Move to schedule a public hearing on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, at seven PM to discuss an ordinance that requires the town fund the actually, actually determined employer contribution ADEC for each active defined benefit pension plan.
Second on that?
Second that.
Thank you. Hearing no other comments, we'll look forward to our public hearing, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, all right, so moved. Okay, on to appointments. We have two, if, if I could just, if we could just hold on to the second one for the golf commission and put that on the next agenda, Kate?
Yes.
That's okay. And, but we can go ahead and take a nomination for the cemetery commission?
I would like to nominate Andrea Millard for the cemetery commission.
Thank you, any other nominations for this position, hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor of Ms. Millard? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, all right. Congratulations, Andrea, we'll hold off on Lucas for a moment. Until next meeting, and then we will. Where are we at?
Our manager.
My goodness gracious.
He bowls the fun.
It's deleted quickly.
Something's not right, that's all right.
I know, yeah.
The only one who complains about that. There's don't, all right, very quickly, just keeping you informed with the Silver Island.
Oh, yeah.
The, so, the last time we met, we had asked them to come up with a restoration plan, they were giving a little bit pushback, and then we got attorney Coppola and the whole group in the town hall, had a conversation, explained what needs to be done, and they have some pushback, agreed to come up with a plan to restore some of the trees that were removed.
That's the homeowners association, right?
Association, right, so, it, it's, it's happening, but just, just an update that.
I appreciate that.
Some progress on that.
Good, that's great.
You probably recall, we have, the town received, and we are going to continue to receive money from the opioid settlements, and there's a townwide committee consisting of me and CCHD, the superintendent, the chief of police, Jamie from Social Services, to figure out how, what's the best use of these funds, this is opioid remediation, it's mostly for education and do different things for mediation and help people in the community, so, what we decide to do is rather than create a whole new process, use some of the existing channels to get the word out, the one of the things we, there were three things we decided to do immediately, one is with CCHD, they more, to fund a recovery coach, a portion, portion of that person's salary to dedicate it to help the community with counseling and advising and getting the word out, so, I have something that they created, and this will mostly be distributed to all the adults, the motels, and the PD will carry this, you know, I need to talk to the chief about that. And then, remember when, when they run across someone who, you know, who needs assistance, the idea is to educate them, they're not there to arrest these people, is to help them, it's the good Samaritan laws in the back here, and try to give them the help that they need. So, that, that has happened, and then the, the PD had requested a replacement for naloxone cases, for cruises, you know, for them to carry it around with them whenever there is a issue, when they run into something, so that they have it immediately with them, so we invested about twenty-six hundred dollars in that very small amount. I am going, the third one is we engaged the Berlin High School students to create a video about awareness, about being left out, loneliness, and there's a, there are social media, they did a really nice job creating YouTube video, I'm gonna send you the link, and we're gonna send it out to all the schools, it's created by the kids and also one of the police officers.
Oh, nice.
And it, it's about life and how everybody feels, and you're not alone, and feel free to reach, so it's really nicely done, they did it on their own, and we're gonna get it out to all the schoolchildren, and then also, I'm thinking, perhaps we can get it out on social media, get it on Berlin Citizen with a QR code, and everybody can hear out, it's all local kids doing it, so, you'll, you'll, I'll send you the link so that you can take a look at it. In addition to that, Brian is looking for a really good keynote speaker to come and talk to the students, you know, pack them all in an auditorium and get someone who is powerful, who can really educate them and understand, because it is an epidemic in the country, and, you know, getting these funds, so far, we have received thirty-three thousand dollars, and we're gonna continue to get amounts each year until like twenty, thirty-something, so, it's ongoing, and there'll come up in new programs to help the community.
Remember that meeting I went to, remember it was last minute? Yeah, Rocky Hill, so, they're doing another one, I saw some email, I don't know if they picked the date yet, I want to say it's a little bit later in March, but what we had come up with at the last meeting, all the towns, right, Weathersfield, Rocky Hill, we were there, Newington, I think was there. There's some group, I think they're just gonna do a Zoom thing, obviously, I want to say they're out on the west coast somewhere, but they, they've got some really, a lot, a lot of it was for like housing for these folks, treatment, obviously, is what we're trying to, want to spend a lot of this opioid settlement money on, but, so, if, could you, could you just maybe check with the town manager, make sure, because somebody should come from Burling, like Social Services yourself.
Who's doing this, who's organizing?
Um, it, it's, it's, it's the towns, it's, it's like the social service folks in Weathersfield and Rocky Hill, Newington, and, and, you know. It it's 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 the towns, it's it's like the social service folks in Weathersfield and Rocky Hill, Newington and and, you know, Berlin is included too, I don't think Cromwell, was Cromwell there too, maybe Cromwell?
Cromwell is not part of.
Not part of it, no, so it's just, it's it's the, it's our health district, I think it's sort of all stemmed from that.
Okay.
But we we just kind of been doing it Rocky Hill because I think the mayor there just, you know, sort of said you can use our town hall.
Happy to reach out.
Just reach out and find out when the next one is, because I know we we talked about a couple of groups that seem to have some great programs for treatment, and then these folks that are in treatment, a lot of them unfortunately are homeless and they need some short term housing to get them back on their feet, so there were some programs out west that seemed to be working, which we were all excited to hear about, so. And so it's coming up in the next couple of weeks, so I didn't, I saw some email, but I don't think they picked a date yet.
Yeah, C C H D is part of it?
Yes, yeah, you could probably ask, was it Ann? Yeah, she was part, she was there the other day.
I don't know why they don't keep us informed.
I know, I don't know why, I don't know why they just keep sending it to me, like, that's, remember the mayor just called me that day, I didn't even know.
They just want the mayors to be part of it.
Well, no, because they had all their, no, they had all their treatment people there, so, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know. No, I want us, our social service people need to be there, you know, that's who's implementing the plan.
I'll see who should be there and can be part of it.
Yeah, so that that'd be good, because it was, you know, it's a good group, so, anyway.
The next one, I just, it copies for all of you, take a look at it, this is a letter from Lorraine Stubb, who wrote to the council a few days ago for the Worthington Meeting House. Yes, Lorraine Stubb, sorry, and then the two hundred and fifty anniversary coming, she would like, you know, I still think about ways we can help to restore this historic building, which is, I think, like a national monument. So I don't know Donna, if you can also see if there are avenues for. Yeah.
They actually did something hard for today that I was, I talked at the beginning of, but wasn't able to stay in the whole meeting, so. I'll reach out to Lorraine, I've got to speak to her.
Oh, good, good, yeah. So she's pretty much asking for our help.
Yeah, that's great, well, we've got to say, we do have to save that building somehow.
And then finally, just, some of you may know this, we talked about it yesterday, Gail Erickson, who's the assistant finance director, is retiring in August after thirty six years.
Wow.
Looking forward to her retirement and grandchildren, et cetera, so we'll be looking for her replacement.
That's a good run, thirty six years, that's pretty good, yeah.
I mentioned before Cindy's retiring, end up this week.
That's right.
Thirty eight years, yeah.
Thirty eight? Oh, okay.
And then we had, not you.
Hey, not hey, no, 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 you're not going anywhere.
Fran, Fran worked for like almost forty years, right? Fran.
Oh, Fran.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, she was there forever, yeah, wow.
All right, and that's it, and just to remind you tomorrow, the board of head budget hearing.
Board of head budget tomorrow, seven o'clock downstairs, upstairs, right?
And then Monday and following Monday and Tuesday is the finance, the board of finance workshop.
Workshops, Monday and Tuesday?
Yes.
Next week.
Yep, that'll be here, I think that's here.
I think those are up here, right?
Yeah.
Like they had them last year.
Everybody's welcome to join, and it's on Zoom as well, you can't make it.
Yeah, it was good last night, it's, you know, good to get the perspective, and I know we all have our our books and stuff, so.
Those who didn't pick up, we have the binders. It's a lot of good information, especially those council members joining for the first time, there's a lot of background information that might be helpful when you're decision making.
Yeah, thank you, absolutely. So special committees, well, we just had our ordinance, yeah. We have some. So so we had the ordinance committee, we're looking at the noise ordinance, and we looked at the the tax abatement for the
daycare.
Daycare folks, and the consensus was not to go forward with that just based upon, we weren't really sure, well, the intent, I guess, of the legislature was to, you know, I guess pass those savings on to the folks, but there's nothing in there to say that's going to happen. So I I don't know, it just didn't seem like it was workable to the ordinance committee, so we just decided not to go forward, yes?
Donna might know a little bit, but we discussed about, the governor had discussed this.
Oh, recently, yeah.
It was unpopular to take money from K through twelve and create some funds for pre-k, daycare. I I don't know if that will move forward, there was some conversation about.
Educate, just starting our public hearings now, and I'm not on the education community, but certainly if I hear and or think that that might be moving forward, I can go back out to.
Yeah.
Anything can happen.
Yeah.
Anything.
But that that intent was to directly give the money to the parents, so the, those who need help.
It's very expensive, you know, there's no question, personally, I think it's the kind of forms that we.
With that, I mean, like his plan, if if, you know, they wanted to move the money around, at least would go right to the the parents, you know, it would go to them directly. Yeah.
Yeah.
Fun times, fun times. So anyway, then special committees, that's where you have your committee, yes?
We had huge turnout for the Mattabasset Watershed Committee.
Much like we have tonight?
About the same, I.
Couple people there.
Prevailed on our staff, the town engineer and his assistant to help me, and I went to Attorney Kearns, who has great knowledge of the local area and the watershed. And it was a commission in the eighties that Dennis served on, so he brought a lot of good background for it.
That's nice.
A lot of money was spent on consultants and volumes written about, there's a lot of problem there, but there was no solution. And it kind of faded because nobody quite knew what to do. But we kind of broke it into three objectives, one on the short term, I don't know if any of the others have been down to the town yard during a heavy rainstorm, but it floods that whole area, Lower Lane, and in two thousand sixteen, Mr. Simons brought that to the attention of the council, and he retrieved two fuel tanks, concrete vaults, they meet all the environmental for above ground storage, did the right things to use. He retrieved them when they reconfigured the high school, and he's been keeping them safe, and it kind of died. So he has the funding in place, I believe, this is a short term cure. And his suggestion back then and now is to put a additional fueling station at the golf course on higher ground. In case the yard ever becomes unserviceable, he can still fuel the equipment for emergency needs.
It's a good idea.
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah.
That's, that's one of our short term goals, and the other short term goals, we're going to reach out to a couple engineering firms, there's one that does a stormwater study that's required by state regulation every year for us, so they're already going to have a good handle, I'm hoping it wouldn't be very expensive for them to give us a quick overview or to pinch points what what could be done to relieve the issue. And then intermediate goal is to look at our local regulations and try to slow the runoff down on new developments, control the stormwater goes and require bigger buffers around the wetlands, maybe, I won't go into all the engineering, but we're going to try to look at maybe some minor regulation changes could help.
Right.
Slow the water down so it doesn't become such a problem. And then in the long term, we're going to look for grants, and Newington is applying for a mega grant, five hundred million dollars to study water in the area. I know we're not going to get this, but we're going to try to piggyback with them and include us in their study area because it's part of the same water basin affecting the Connecticut.
That is quite a big.
That's where we're going, but these gentlemen were a great help, and I want to thank them. If anybody from the council wants to add or remembers anything, I appreciate any help, thank you.
That's great, sounds like some good solutions there to to some stuff, problems we have. So that's great, I think that's all for the special committee reports, right, nothing else? And on to council communications, what do we have, folks, anything? Oh, yes, congratulations to that, yes, that's that's excellent, very good. Excellent.
Trevor, Austin Lawrence, a whopping nine towns and twelve lines.
Hey, yeah.
Fucking pain there.
Yeah, that's it. Excellent.
Congratulations.
Yeah, congratulations, that's excellent. Anything else, any other? Yeah, that's it. You can't beat it. Just one quick thing I wanted to mention based upon last night. Just, I was thinking back as we talked about in the budget, you know, possibly making the part time animal control officer full time, so I would just have some questions, I I'm guessing the board of finance will too, this is just came in my head, but did we ever, so could we see, I know we talked about this a while ago, but like logs and what our full time officer does during the day, because we mentioned she would, if we made part time one full time, she would do some things that sounded to me like, and maybe I misunderstood what was being stuff that our full time officer should should be doing and probably maybe is doing, I don't know, but I I just want to know what she does, because quite frankly, I've I've had had some residents that have called for animal control and don't get a call back for several days sometimes. And I've also heard that dispatch at the police department sometimes doesn't get a hold of her, which is why, remember we wanted her to have a police radio, we were going to get her, I thought, a portable, I don't, because she wasn't on the police radio system, I thought, when we talked about this a while ago. I I don't know, could we find out if she is or isn't, because I mean, that's a safety issue for me, like if she's not on the police radio band, who would she even talk to, God forbid? She did get attacked by a dog or a person or, you know, people, it's there, but I don't know how we, if we could look into that, and who, and she reports directly to Jen now, Jen Ochoa? So is there like a daily log of of citations, calls? Because I know there's been some issues at Pistol Creek, and I don't know who's responded, but I I've heard a few people talk to me about it, they have sometimes a tough time with response, but that's what I want to see the.
So a few times I've asked, like, who are these people?
Yes.
Call me, contact me, tell me, date time when they call, I have received nothing.
Okay, specifics, yeah.
Specifics, because when 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 people call, it's leave a message, we get back to them.
Right.
So I I can't help without.
Yeah, I I get you with that, yeah.
So.
But do we have like, so she's.
I'll ask Jen.
Yeah, I mean, she's supervised by Jen, she obviously used to be under the police department, which I believe she belongs, but I understand with the past settlement, I guess that can't happen, I don't know if there's any way to revisit that, but that's where she should be, that's where every other town pretty much has them there. And for her safety, she certainly should be in the police system, and maybe she is, I I thought though she wasn't. So could we find out, and I would also suggest a GPS on her van.
The chief is online.
Chief, oh, chief, yes.
If.
Chief.
How you doing?
Hey, how are you?
Interesting conversations tonight, better than television.
Yeah. So question for you, do you know if our animal control officer is on the police radio system?
No, I don't think she is.
Okay.
I know we've talked about this in the past too, but you got a unique situation here with how she had an agreement where she doesn't answer to the police department. You know, and there's some statutory stuff that you might want to look into, I'm sure Attorney Denofio is well aware of these statutes that say that they're supposed to answer to the police, but you have some previous history that negates that here. Our contact with her is very, very limited.
So that that really begs the question, yeah, that begs the question even more about her safety, honestly, because if she doesn't, can't reach the police by radio, I I know she could call, I'm sure, and Jen Ochoa, she could call her, I'm not sure in emergency, what Jen could do, I guess, call the police. I don't see why she wouldn't have a portable radio from the police department for emergency sake, not not for overseeing her, I understand the past agreement, but safety wise, she's just on her own, and that's not safe for any employee, especially what she does. You know, I mean, a dog can attack her, a person, the dog owner could attack her, who who's she going to contact, you know, without a radio?
Know if she has had any safety issues in the past?
Don't know, but but again, always in law enforcement and this type of, you don't want to wait till something happens, you want to be prepared. No, there's only one, it's one.
Are you looking to eliminate coverage over the weekend too while we're on?
No, no, we're going to add weekday evenings today.
Weekday evenings.
By making.
Persons all day, they are part time, make it full time, so that there's no coverage in the evenings. So we, that goes especially till late in the evening.
Yeah, what does she work, like eight to four?
Eight to four.
It's eight to four, Monday through Friday, and then you'll have a part time person?
Part time person right now works Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
Okay, so they'll continue doing?
Continue to do that, and add Wednesday and Thursday, perhaps like eleven to eight.
So you'll have two full time?
Yes, yeah, one point five two.
Correct.
So if I can interject, would the question be that you need two radios?
Yeah, certainly the 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 part time lady too, yeah, they should both both be able to, safety wise, have a portable with them, I mean, I mean, you know, if you're laying on the ground somewhere, I mean, sometimes there's no cell service, the radio would be a safety issue of nothing else. And again, not not to have her, she's not reporting to you, but.
Rabbit animal?
Yes, whatever happens.
Just, you know, because we're dealing with the radio issues from the blackout still, you know, we're dealing with Norcom and looking at upgrades to the radio system under another subject, so I think that we should add the two radios as part of that plan, because I I got to be honest, I don't know if we have two additional spare radios to the one or two that we have now.
Yeah, you know, and that, you know, chief, speaking of radios like that, extra radios, so Berlin Police Department has how many? So officers are out on patrol, how many, you don't have any spare radios of, God forbid, one gets run over or broken?
We have two.
You have two spare radios?
Yeah.
I guess I would say that's certainly not enough, in in my experience, we would want more than that, because they do break, they do get, and we know they get dropped, they get run over, they get, God forbid, other things happen to them, but so maybe with the new, and no sense buying if we're changing the system, I know we're working on that new system, but I think we probably need to look into, I don't know what that number is, chief, but I would think more than two would would be helpful, obviously to add the animal controlled folks on it would be.
Yeah, I agree with that, I think that I'm I'm going to Norcom on the twelfth in the morning down in Norbituck or Watertown, wherever they are there, to get the the final numbers that we've been asking for the past couple of weeks now. And, you know, of course, they're always trying to sell you more than what you need, so it's a vendor, but I'll definitely I I know we were looking at getting more radios than we needed.
Yeah.
If we had to buy portables, I thought the idea was not to buy portables, maybe enhance with, I think we were looking to get eight more portables, but enhance the current one so it would cost us a lot less money, so I can I can add, I can add two to the eight and and negotiate that.
Yeah, that's fine, no, I get that part, yeah, as long as we have, you know, we had the two for them, they should definitely have one each, and you know, maybe more than a couple, I don't know, maybe five, I don't know what that number is, but I, you know, I don't know, my experience, we always were breaking radios, and if we didn't have spares, we'd be out of luck in many situations.
Oh, yeah, I've seen that in my career too, the other thing is, if if they if they get radios, because I don't believe they have radios, if they get radios, then we have to also, we will also have to have them go to training for sieges, system security for the criminal justice information system, so they're going to have to do some training on top of their animal control stuff, because they're going to be hearing police stuff, and that's, it's got to be secured, so.
Sure, understood.
So we'll have to let Jen know that too.
Okay, yeah, absolutely, I mean, a small price to pay for safety.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I think it's a great idea, I think they should add radios all along.
Yeah.
Mark, we should, we should do, like you had mentioned, the GPS as well for the van, just safety reasons, just like we talked about for the V N A nurse.
Yes.
I mean, it's, you you just don't know where you're going and what possibly happens.
Right, and and I, you know, Jen, well, I I just don't think Jen, you know, not, I mean, Jen's a great boss and all that, but that that's not who should really be supervising that position, that's, you know, semi law enforcement, but she writes citations, I. Well, yes, we have the past agreement.
It was a council decision.
When when she was rehired, right? Well, it wasn't a, it was a, it was a.
Council decision, yeah.
Yeah.
The count, it was under the P D.
Yes.
P D took some disciplinary action.
Yes.
The the community rallied and supported her.
Yes.
And brought it to the council, and the council said hire her back, and the P D said, no. And the PD said, no, we're not hiring her back. And then the council said, good, put it under the town manager. And they signed an agreement saying unless town, the Blue Collar Union, and that ACO, all three agreed, it'll stay like that. And we have looked at that agreement nine weeks to Sunday with so many different attorneys. It's ironclad.
That's quite the agreement. Kudos to our past town council. That's, that's unheard of, but anyway, it is what it is.
Thinking of changing hours and all of that, I happened to catch an interview with a state rep that has a bill and committee to make town sharing responsibilities easier, to take away the roadblocks. And he specifically said things like animal control might, might be effective, so like weekends or nights, we might be able to share it one on a day.
I think we do, don't, don't we share a little bit with maybe New Brit, New Britain, Rocky Hill, or?
Cromwell.
Or, Cromwell, Cromwell, right. I knew we shared, and that's good.
One of the, our pound is next door to New Britain, but we don't share with them. But anyways, his idea was to take away some of the roadblocks that the towns have, so it may help us with this shortly.
Yeah, that's good. I hope that does. So, I know, I know, chief, you work on the radios. Could, could we, whatever GPS plan we had planned for the nurses' vehicles?
We have spares now because we are eliminating three positions.
Yes, so we could put, what, what do we have? Two animal control vans or just one?
Two.
Two, so we could put those two on their vans. Again, safety-wise, and could we see what? I don't know, is there a log or, you know, just, just to see what, what goes on with animal control every day? Citations written, calls?
Finding animals, feeding animals, washing them.
What's that?
Taking care of animals.
That too. I mean, whoa, I mean, whatever their day is taken up with. I mean, I would, I understand that's part of it. I don't know how many, I mean, you know what? Just out of curiosity, because I know nothing about it. How many animals are in the shelter on any given day? Is there an average per week, per month, per day? I don't know. You know, I don't know what, what happens to them? I don't know any of that, honestly, and I feel like I...
I don't either.
No, I know. I mean, but, but I mean, I think we should know when we're looking at making another, another full-time officer before we...
I mean, I know, but I don't know what...
No, I mean, we know generally what they do, but, but I think just specifically, and I, you know, I would imagine before we're going to add a, you know, not that we don't need one, we probably do to have coverage, but just to see what goes on in the week, the day, the week, the month.
I'll ask them, put something together.
Yeah, and, and that would be helpful, right? So, so we know. That's my little piece of the, of the budget process for, for now. There's many more pieces, I guess, we'll be talking about as the budget goes. Anyway, any other communication from anyone? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and accept our February twentieth minutes. We'll make a motion. Thank you, second on that?
Second, yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Alright, so moved. And a motion to adjourn. It's way too early to adjourn. Motion to adjourn, what do you have? Second? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Alright, so moved. Thank you, folks, very much. Getting adjourned.
Me though?
Done.
We're done.
Oh, go over.
We're done, Matt.
Thanks.
Thanks, chief. Yeah.